Number seven, final update for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020. Spencer.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, I will be presenting you with year-end updates for fiscal year 1920. These are unaudited, and therefore, the general fund and utilities. Audited results will be available as usual next month, and financials will be published by the end of the fiscal year. So I cannot see my slides that you're looking at in the presentation, so I just see a big white screen. So I'll be verbally asking for slides to be advanced. Thank you, Sierra and Judy. So on slide two, I just want to start with the general fund, and just to mention that while we know what 1920 looks like, 2021 is still full of unknowns. I will continue to monitor revenues and support council's vision as we discuss possible amendments at future time. Slide three. For fiscal year 1920, we are looking at good news. Our revenues landed much better than expected and actually above the original budget. I will go into detail on the following slides, but I can say that the expenditure savings was throughout most categories with about 2.3 million in savings from salary benefits, little over a million in savings from materials supplies and service, and about 300,000 in capital acquisition savings. The, I'll get into the more detail in the in future slides, but you know, the savings work for several reasons. Let's get started on revenues on slide four. You can see a 10-year history of sales tax. The green bar near the right is the budget. The gold is what we revised, what we projected, actually, and the last purple bar is the actual. You can see that the actual came in quite a bit higher than projected, and there's, I'll give a few reasons for that in the following slides. But that's, sales taxes essentially why we were so, had done, had done so much better in revenues than we expected. Slide five. You can see that these are the reasons, these are major categories for the city. These are the reasons, some of the reasons why sales tax did so much better, leading the group with a 10% increase over what we projected in March. Back in March is autos and transportation. If you can recall, back in March and April, there was a time when the showrooms were closed. People were not able to get access to vehicles, and that, that short time ended. And so, at the end of the fiscal year, there was quite an appetite to purchase new and used vehicles. And so, our autos and transportation were up. Compared to the, what we projected in March, building and construction was up by 6%. Has a lot to do with people sitting at home and seeing all the unfinished and desired projects in their homes. And so, the Home Depots and Lowe's were, did very well during that time, including other construction purchases. Business and industry was also up. This includes agriculture, equipment and sales, but it also includes the equipment that the teleworkers and the distance learners were using at home. So when people had to upgrade their technology to make working at home work, then that is category. Food and drugs was, was down 4% from what we expected. We all know that not everybody cooks these days, so a lot of those grocery store trips went to fast food. Fuel and service stations was down just because of supply, I'm sorry, just because of demand. There was fewer people commuting to other counties to, to work. And when there was, when people stopped buying the fuel, the fuel prices went down as well. So it was a double land for fuel and service stations. General consumer goods were up, lots of retail therapy going on when people were sitting at home. And, or that was one of the only outlets, actually, was to be able to go to some of the stores that were still open. Restaurants and hotels decreased from our, we'd already projected that they were going to be low, but they actually came in 1% less than we projected back in March, as the hotels and restaurants, especially dining restaurants, had really suffered. The last two lines refer to the county pool. The county pool is where the internet retail sales, sales tax lands, and all the sales that happen within the, that get attributed to the county, go into the county pool from internet retail sales. So all the Wayfair and Amazon, all those online sales go to the county. Uba City is about 70% of the county pool, and so we're allocated about 70% of that revenue. So you can see that we, we had expected in March that it was, was going to continue to be strong. It came in 5% higher than our expectations. And then I included a line just below that that shows you that compared to fiscal year 1819, 1920 was up 20% in this category. So after the April 19, April 2019 Wayfair decision in the courts, you can see that the revenue has really picked up in this category and continues to be strong. On slide six, I included a slide. There's nothing particularly remarkable about property tax, other than it has been steady for us, and it continues to be steady during the pandemic event. The tax rules for 1920 were already set back in October, and so the property tax remained what the property tax was going to be. We are a teeter planned city. That means that if your neighbors do not pay their property tax, then the county can still pays the city that amount, but then does all the collections on the delinquency on its own. And so, the city stays whole in that case. So property tax remains strong. On slide seven, I'm illustrating how the, the next six largest revenue comparisons came out. They, the first two being sales tax and property tax. These are the next six. You can see that a couple of the categories, franchise fee and CSAG fire did, did as we were expecting. Franchise fee would be Recology and Comcast, AT&T and such, PG&E fees that they paid to the city, and CSAG is the County Service Area G, which the Sutter County fires, sorry, Uba City Fire serves Sutter County residents in the CSAG area, and the city receives a little revenue for that. Two other categories did better than we expected, business licenses and building permits. Business licenses were due in February before the effects of the pandemic hit Uba City, but they were, they continued to roll in through the rest of the fiscal year. We have been hearing stories about new businesses starting even, even during the pandemic, and these are the revenues that show it. The other building permits, we did receive one very large permit from a new project very near City Hall, and that made the difference from above what departments were projecting, Development Services Department projected, just under 1 million, and it came in at about 1.4. It's hotel motel surcharge, or we call it TOT and recreation programs, were hit the hardest during the pandemic of these categories. And you can see that we, that hotels and motels did actually a little bit better, collecting transient occupancy tax than where, than we projected. When I was speaking to the motels in March, April timeframe, I was fairly convinced we were not going to receive another payment until after the end of the fiscal year. But late in the fiscal year, we started receiving late payments as motel started to do a little bit more business and were able to make those, those payments. But as you can see, they still are below budget and are still struggling. And so, we hope that they can continue to get traction into the new fiscal year. And then recreation programs, I projected that we would not receive any further revenue in, from when I was looking at the numbers in March and April, and we only received very little, about $1,000 more than, than I projected. On slide eight, this is just a snapshot of general fund revenues in millions for the last 10 years. And you can see that we budgeted for 45 million in the, in the green bar. It appeared in March that we were going to come in closer to 43.3 million, but when sales tax made such a big recovery, we came in and made our, made our numbers at the 45 million, almost, almost 46 million. General fund expenditures is on slide nine. You can see that this is just a simple graphical overlay of how much we spent compared to how much we budgeted. What we spent was in purple and what we budgeted was in, was in that gold yellow color. And about 94% of general salary, general fund salaries and budget was, were spent. About 91% of materials, supplies and services were spent, which would be the operating. So if you look at total general fund expenses, they, they came in just as the departments had projected. So the green bar again is, is the original 1920 project budget, but as part of the 2021 budget process, we asked the departments to estimate where they're going to finish the year in their, in their expenditure budgets. And you can see that they were pretty much right on. They were very, very close with their projections, knowing their operations very well, and knowing what their limitations were due to the pandemic. Slide 11 shows department by department, how these savings came out. You can see that other than two departments, two, or divisions, the, everybody had a little bit of a save, of savings. We knew going into the turn of the fiscal year, or I'm sorry, the turn of the calendar here, we knew that our legal fees were already very, very high. And so, that was not a surprise that we finished over budget with our, our legal. But that's in the 109,432 negative number, second from the top. And then we could see that fire, we knew that by then that fire was going to have trouble showing any kind of savings because of some very large retirement payouts that happened. We're always very pleased when people can finish their career here with the city, Uba City. Sometimes it comes with a large expenses they get paid out for their accrued leave. And then there was also some expenses with fire related to work comp, overtime, backfilling for industrial injuries. Slide 12, I put this slide in to, just to show that we have come out of the recession, and then we've had a pretty good run of revenue in the green bars as they, as they continue to grow revenues overall. A lot of that's led by, by the sales tax. However, it, it doesn't appear so here, but these purple bars are the expenditures that are also growing. And these expenditures show, show a surplus at the end of, of the seven years in a row. That's strictly because we were not able to fill all of the vacancies that happened throughout the year. And so, some vacancy, we, we go into the fiscal year with some vacancies, and we end the fiscal year with vacancies. It's, it's not always as though the same positions are vacant throughout the whole year. So what happens with these, when we have this surplus, this, this surplus that you see, this is how we fund our general fund capital improvement projects. This is how we fund our pension stabilization reserve. And sometimes this one-time money goes to, one-time payments to employees for, in lieu of raises. With that, I'm ready to go on to the utility funds unless we have any questions about the general fund before I get too far along. Only have a few more slides, like four more slides. Hearing none, keep going. So slide, slide 13, slide 14, let's go to slide 14. This slide is a similar slide, similar slide that you viewed last year at this time, which is a summary of the waters funds budget versus actual. Operating revenue came in 6.7% less than budgeted. Water sales were just over $1 million, $1,61,000 less than budgeted. In reviewing the underlying reason why, consumption was 2% lower than in the previous year, and revenues were down 2.5%. And this, the revenue could be explained by billing delinquencies, as the governor has ordered that water companies such as Uba City not charge delinquencies or perform delinquency shut offs due to non-payment. Capital connection fees came in below budget estimates by 38,000, and operating expenses ended the year just under 1.5 million under budget, or 14.5%. The savings occurred in many categories. Salaries and benefits, there was 661,000 in savings, almost 172,000 in professional services, 237,000 in special equipment O and M, just under 86,000 in building and facility O and M, just under 166,000 in chemicals, and 318,000 in water use. The next slide has to do with the debt coverage ratio. As you can recall from earlier conversations, that we're bound by bond covenant to have a debt coverage ratio of 1.2 when we compare the, the revenues to the debt service, the revenues and expenses to the debt service. And so, these are shown in thousands of dollars, of course. The calculation took the total revenue, including capital connection fee revenues, and subtract operating expenses to get the net revenues. This amount is then divided by the total debt service amount to get the ratio. Again, per the city's bond covenants, the ratio must be maintained at a level of at least 1.2 or 120%. The city's ratio has been fairly low in the past, but as of 1920, it's at 2.36%. Moving on to wastewater on slide 16. This is a summary of the water funds, budget versus actual, operating revenues ended year about 1.8% higher than budgeted, or 292,000. Utility billing service charges exceeded budget estimates by 193,000. Subtlety charges were less than budget estimates by 55,000, and sense discharge revenue exceeded the budget by 138,000. Overall capital connection fee revenues were 204,000 lower than budgeted. Operating expenditures were at 89.4% of the amounts budgeted, and the savings equated to 1.258,000, 1.258 million less than budgeted. The major savings were attributed to 490,000 in salaries and benefits, 136,600 in heat and power, 203,000 in special services savings, 59,000 in dues and subscriptions, 132,000 in special equipment O and M. The fund was over budget by 17,000 in building and facilities O and M, and there was 281,000 savings in chemicals. And 118,700 in savings in equipment. The wastewater coverage on slide 17, similar to, to the water, that's taken into account the total revenues, and the, subtracts the operating expenses to get a net amount, and this amount must equal 120% of debt service or our bond covenants. You can see a four year, well, including 1920, four years of, of history there. And so that brings me to my last slide. And I just want to emphasize that as difficult as, as difficult as the decisions are going to be for the fiscal year and with all the uncertainty, it is great news that we are not starting fiscal year 2021 essentially with, in a deficit position or below, in a reduced, reduced, reduced reserve position. And so, we still have lots, lots to consider, and the Budget Ad Hoc Committee is still reviewing the fiscal year 2021 requests and all the department feedback they recently received. May I address any questions from the dais?
Go ahead.
Through the mayor. Spencer, thank you for the presentation. Just want to make sure that we emphasize one particular important point, because I do believe that there is some misinformation being distributed throughout the community. Our projected deficit based upon the unknown of the pandemic, and our conservative efforts to save money during the unknown, was approximately how much?
I recall we were at about 1.1 million.
Okay. And through the efforts of city staff and the cooperative efforts of the employees that work for the city, and the prudent management of the finances, we actually ended up where? Roughly?
Ended up with about a $2.5 million surplus.
So kudos to you and to, to the department heads in the room and any of the city employees that are listening for taking the efforts in this unprecedented situation to, to monitor and guide the city through this financial challenge that the COVID-19 situation brought to us. It, it's important to note, and you did at the end, and I appreciate that, that there is more money available than we had projected, but there's also more work to be done by the Ad Hoc Budget Committee and finally from my colleagues here at the dais in regards to, to how we, how we allocate those funds across the, the city's budget. I think it's also important to note that due to the fact that we continue to experience, though I hope not for much longer, business closure and other unknowns due to COVID, that, that, you know, we need to continue to be mindful of, of the, the spending of our finances. But again, I would probably conclude my comments right now, just saying thank you again. And I think, you know, there's many of the department heads in here. Thank you to you and your staffs for, for taking on the challenge of turning what could have been a deficit into something a lot better than that. Thank you.
I don't mind elaborating on that a little bit, too. Definitely kudos to our staff and the planning that went into, into place to get us to where we are. This is a, a positive situation for sure. I know employees have taken some sacrifice, and we, and in our fire department, we have a bracket around about two, a little over $200,000, but I know those folks have really stepped up and made some sacrifice in dealing with some delays and purchases. The numbers at the time that we gathered them are what they are. But I know there's some, probably some reimbursements, significant reimbursements are still on, on the way. In addition to the city staff and the planning and every, all the hard work people have done, I think it's also appropriate to thank the public and our community. Spencer, you mentioned some folks actually took the jump and started a business during a global pandemic. And you know what? Kudos to those folks for doing that and taking a chance and doing it. Of course, the online shopping, guilty. Well, you know, that, that makes a big difference. And, you know, everything that you mentioned and pointed out, line by line, combined gets us to where we are today. And that's a, a community effort, and under no small part is the, the folks that work here in City Hall and work for the city. So thank you for all of them. Thank you for all of you. And let's take this new challenge and do something positive with it. Thank you very much.
I know, I know, just giving you the, the time to speak, mayor.
I'm done. I sat back.
No, I know. You usually get to sit back. So it's time for you to speak up. I think Mark lead, leaded, took the lead in, in really recognizing the, the work. I think that what was really helpful in this process so far was the, each of the department heads in meeting with department staff and coming up with some really strong plans for us to consider and to be focused on those decisions. But as we made those decisions, one of the things, I believe, as a council as a whole, is that we wanted to have not just department heads to be included in those conversations, that each of you would go back to your teams and speak with them and these decisions. So I think that we did a fair amount of that work to, to allow us to be in a position with a surplus. And also to say to the community, you know, stepping in and, and helping and taking care of their own lives. There's been some additional funding through EDC that I'll talk about that is, I think, has also helped with some of the local businesses to stay in business, which is, I think, a big focus that when we were having our discussions, not just as a city, what do we do with essential services, but at the same time, how do we help our local businesses stay in business, and also at the same time, protect people's health. And so, I would just like to thank all of you that are in the room today, and those that if you're watching, we, we have a surplus. That's the good news. We have some decisions to make in the future. And community and staff, if you ever wanted just to talk or send me a text, I'm open to having a conversation and figuring out how we're going to move forward with these funds. But thank you so much. And, and so far for our financial ad hoc committee, Mark and Dave, they've really have stepped in and doing some of the work. So I appreciate both of you doing that as, to this point. And I look forward to hopefully, when will we have a kind of a final report? Do you two have any idea when that may look like? Hopefully, about a month or so? Okay, great. Thank you.
Through the mayor. And thank you. You know, real quick, I also want to give a shout, you mentioned the EDC and the loans, which is awesome, but you know, you, the DBA in our chamber, they have really gone public with a lot of efforts helping the businesses and keeping the, the conversation going, and the public has stepped up and listened, and much appreciated. So go ahead.
I'm just going to follow council's lead. I want to thank the city employees, our staff and the community for helping us get through this. And hopefully, there's a rainbow at the end of this, at the end of this road, and we're going to continue on and have a great city to live in and prosper. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, echo everything that's been said so far, but I want, I want to add a few more things to it, because we need to make sure we're looking at things in the right perspective. And, and Spencer, to you and your team, thank you for engaging with us from the start. I think where we're at now, the key, one of the keys is that we as a council, we as a city, meaning our E-team, all of our employees, we didn't look at this with blinders on. We looked at what was staring us in the face. And if you really look at it, our income revenues, we expected those. And Spencer, we're going to take a trip back several months, because you came in, the state's telling us that our revenues is going to drop, and these, all this is going to happen. And we heard all the bad things, other municipalities laying off employees, doing all kinds of stuff. And I was cautiously optimistic in that, not just myself, but under the vice mayor was as well, because we actually were in tune with what was going on in our community. And so, there's a lot of things we have to look at. And so, when you look at it from that perspective, our revenues, because of knowing where this community is, and it's an ag-based community, and then the help that came along the way with the stimulus money and the manufacturers of autos, which was the biggest jump, they were basically giving those away with no interest. It helps sales tax. These things kind of fed in to get our revenues back. But at the same time, you know, I, I go back to our, all of our team members at the city, because I go back to what I was told in the military, because I was, when I was in, we went through a reduction in force. And for a couple of years, we were always asked to do more with less. And I can tell you now that across the board, this has been going on at the city and a lot of the departments for a long lot of the departments for a long time, and it's a wholehearted thank you, I think you've heard from all five of us up here tonight, to all of our team members, you guys stepped up to that challenge. But to add to that, it's not just the team members, it's the community as well, everyone stepped up. Things that we've got to be looking at on the horizon, because while this is encouraging, this is a snapshot in time. I don't want to be doom and gloom, but we got to realize this is a snapshot in time. Nothing caught us by surprises, because we knew that we had salary savings from positions that were already unfilled, because this council took the position as well, that we prioritized, we didn't want to see anyone suffer financially, you know, that was kind of our last resort, and I am very proud of all the work that the team at the city has done, that we was able to do that through this thus far. No surprises. Chief Fire, we knew what was coming. Your guys, pardon the French, do a hell of a job every day protecting the city, and we knew what was in that, and it didn't catch us by surprise. We knew that there were some large retirements and things in there. We know that they have been doing things at times, as I was told, raising, you know, you got expectations of champagne and caviar, and we gave you guys a beer and potato chip budget, you know, it's just that simple. And you guys have done phenomenal, okay? So don't feel bad about the brackets, because we know what's there, and there's good things that you guys are doing. I want to take a step looking forward, though, Mr. Mayor, because while this looks good right now, we're still in this, and the biggest problem, and I'm not trying to get political, but the biggest problem that we have that faces our revenue is in Sacramento at the state capitol, because it's the executive orders where our governor belayed sales tax, and I get why they did that, but then he's, a lot of other things that's come into play that affect our revenue stream, and so with that, we are not going to know, and that's why we're doing this quarter by quarter, we're not going to know what is coming in because of state programs that are allowing our businesses to defer payments and such. So, and we'll go back to the utilities, there was the moratorium and the, you know, don't shut off utilities, let it grow, and that's grown into a large number. If we continue through this and these numbers grow, we could be looking at the first quarter of this year, second quarter of this year, it could be a different picture. So I'm encouraged, and Spencer, I stay cautiously optimistic, and hopefully I can earn your trust in that, because I'm looking at a lot of other things and just what our consultants tell us, especially the gentleman two seats down when he tells me that the farmers, I want to thank them, because you guys bought a lot of tractors. And you know, those are the things that speak to our community, not how many people really stay in our hotels, because we're not a tourist-based community, we're an ag-based community. So we're going to face this head-on, and just reiterate, I want to say thank you, but this is a snapshot in time. And Spencer, to you guys, you guys, Lynn, you guys did an awesome job working with us. I know we asked a lot, and we're going to keep diving into the budget, and we will keep looking at it and doing everything we can going forward. So thank you, I'm still cautiously optimistic, but we're all fighting for us as a city together, and just keep that in mind. So, thank you.
Through the mayor, a couple of quick comments. Number one, an effort such as the city undertook is usually the result of a leader, and we've thanked a lot of people specifically, but we haven't thanked the interim city manager for her leadership through this process. So I really think, Diana, once again, you have shown your leadership skills in helping the city manage through this unknown. The second thing that I, it may have been said, but I think it was, I didn't hear it, which isn't uncommon these days. Yeah, not yet, but too many sirens and airhorns. The county, Sutter County, we mentioned the EDC in regards to their ability to facilitate the loans, but it was really the county of Sutter that donated the money. So our partners across the street over at Sutter County, the supervisors, I want to make sure that they get acknowledged for their contribution to keeping businesses open in the city of Uba City as well. Thank you.
All right, very good. Any member of the public care to comment? Go ahead, Tom. Anybody on the computer by chance?
No one on the computer.
All right. Do you know how many people are watching on that machine there?
Currently, six.
Six, all right.
I want to thank all the public sector for working hard, and I want to say, Spencer, you look like you're in prison. Do they have, are you locked up?
We keep him over there. All right. All right, well, thank you all very much. Looking forward to some more action here. And Diana, also from, thank you very much for your leadership. It's very, very comforting to know you're sitting right there. Always answer the phone, even on weekends, want to tell you not to. Number nine, update to the 2013 Sutter County Local Hazard Mitigation Plan. Welcome, Ben.